I'll go ahead and call this meeting to order on September 2nd, 2025, and ask the city clerk to please call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Present.
Commissioner Smith?
Here.
Commissioner Thomas?
Here.
Commissioner Wilson?
Present.
Mayor Bray?
Present. I would ask Commissioner Henderson to say the invocation, if you would, and I'll ask everybody to remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
God of heaven, we thank you so much for this beautiful day that you've given us, and we thank you, Father, always, for the blessings that we do enjoy. Father, we come to you tonight as a body, as commissioners, as mayor, and we thank you for the privilege that you've given us to serve this community. We pray, oh, God, that in our deliberations and our thinking that we will make decisions that will indeed benefit the masses. Father, we pray for our employees, we pray for our city, and pray your covering on all of us. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City manager, are there any deletions to the agenda?
Mayor, none this evening.
Okay, we'll kick off. Audra, welcome. We'll let you talk about, we have a property tax hearing.
Yes. Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, City Clerk. The purpose of this public hearing is to give the public an opportunity to comment on the proposed 27.1 cent real estate tax levy. A hearing is required by Kentucky revised statutes if the proposed rate exceeds the compensating rate, which is 26.1 cents this year. Local government is permitted to adjust their rate upward by 4% above the compensating rate we're proposing to take, the 4% allowable this year. Later in tonight's meeting, the proposed property tax levy ordinance will be introduced. Staff recommends that you set the city's real estate property tax levy at 27.1 cents. The final reading for the levy ordinance is September 15th, and I'll be happy to answer any questions you all might have.
No questions from me. I think I understand it pretty well. Is this the time we'd open the hearing? So, there's some people that have filled out some sheets here, so I'll start with Matthew. Sorry if I missed.
You're fine.
Okay. Thank you, sir.
Thank you for the opportunity to speak here today. I find, as I heard about this today, I'm one of those people that doesn't come to these meetings very often. In fact, if I come, it's because it's something I'm real passionate about. So, you'll not see me here very often. But I think there's a lot of people like that, too. In fact, as I look around, I really don't see a lot of people here, and I think this is an issue that a lot of people are going to care about. I think that when their taxes increase, they've already seen an increase in property value assessments, so they've seen an increase in tax. But when they actually see this come through, I think you're going to find there's going to be people like me that start coming to these meetings more often. I would call them sleeping giants. Not that I'm a giant, but I'm someone that's willing to get involved in something like this. I'm willing to talk to other people about it. I'm willing to share it on social media, and I'm willing to really call out each one of our representatives here and say that I don't like property tax, period. It seems unfair. I can't even imagine going to buy an expensive bicycle, and then I get a bill every year for that bike. Maybe it's a little different, but there's a lot of things that we buy, and no one wants to pay tax on something they already pay tax on year after year, and now you want to increase that. So, I find it very unfair. And I feel like by doing this, and I kind of feel like this is a meeting that you've called, that you're already going to do it. You've already got the pet projects lined up. You need the money, but this is just something you have to do. I feel like you're going to wake up a bunch of sleeping giants, a bunch of people, a bunch of citizens that are like me that don't come to your meetings, but have just had it. I mean, everything costs more. Would you not agree? Cars cost more, homes cost more, groceries cost more. Everything that you need, that you want, it costs more. And now, we're going to pay even more on tax, something we pay every year for something we already own. And you may have reasons. You may say, "Well, it's for city this and city that." There's other ways to pay for things, but that's not my purpose, to come up here and complain about that. My purpose is to say, each one of you will be up for reelection next year. I believe that's correct. And it's possible there could be a lot of new names on those lists that people look at, and people get upset about this kind of thing because when you touch their money, you know, people will act. People will show up, like, "I'm here today because of it. I got other things I'd rather be doing. I don't want to be here. I don't want to be here." But because I heard about this today, I decided to take my time away from my family. I believe there are other people that will do it, too. But I'm surprised there's not more people here. I'm curious, is there anyone here that came to support this? Is there anyone that came here tonight that says, "I want to pay more tax on something I paid tax on the year before, and the year before, and the year before"? Anyone here for that purpose? I don't think anybody wants to pay more taxes. And you might say you don't care. Well, you may care at election time next year. I don't know. Maybe people will stay asleep. I'm not, and I might start coming to these meetings more often. Maybe I'll just run myself for council. I don't know. But I'd like to think, is there anybody here that came tonight to say they don't want to pay more taxes? We got a couple. Yeah. So, I think you'll see more people once this goes through. It'll take the implementation of it. It's very frustrating. It's very... We have multiple properties, but this is really going to add up for us. And I've got a business on top of that, so I'll be paying more for that business license. So, I just ask that, I respectfully ask that you consider this. You consider these things, and in the end, you don't do it, even though I feel like you've kind of already decided you're going to do it, and this is just a formality. But I hope you don't. I appeal to you. And I don't mean to come across gruff. I want to be respectful as I come to you today. You're my neighbor, Buzz.
Right.
I don't mean any ill will against you. I just wanted to come and share my thoughts on this, and I hope you'll give consideration to this.
Will you share your home address and your business address?
Not over this microphone, I won't, no. It's on the paper.
I think it's required.
Yeah, it's on the paper. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, sir.
Appreciate the opportunity to come here. Appreciate it.
Hey, I have a suggestion. Can we, there may be some confusion about this tax and how much it is personal property versus real property, so maybe that might be good.
Yeah, I can give some clarifying comments. So, the city rate last year was 26.4. So, this is a 0.7 increase to 27.1. So, that equates to about an $18 increase per $250,000 of assessed value.
For a home?
For a home, yes.
For real property?
Yes. Now, the personal rate that we're proposing to keep that the same for personal property, which is 0.356, which is same as last year. Last year, it was a decrease, and this year, we're proposing to keep that the same.
Personal property being vehicles. Just explain that so people really know what you're referring to.
It's business, it's related to businesses. It's tangible property for businesses.
Is there a question down here?
I've never heard of a bicycle being taxed. Is that...
No, I don't think that's... I think it was an example that he was trying to use that it's not reoccurring tax on a bicycle.
Is there any other way? I'm trying to think of something else I could do to clarify that.
No, the only thing that I would add is, and it's taken me five years since I was elected the first time, to really understand. And I realize that property values have gone up, and they've gone up because, well, for a lot of reasons. First of all, you know, property is increasing, and our PVA, which is an elected official, you know, not associated with the city, you know, goes out and does assessments, you know, on an annual basis and makes sure that properties are assessed at current market value. And I know that because the previous PVA, prior to this person getting elected, had not kept up with a lot of property values, there have been a lot of increased property values over the last, let's say, three to four years. The city, in terms of what we can do as far as the tax, we are limited by state law
Yes.
that we cannot take any more than, in aggregate, a 4% increase.
Yes, that's true.
And so, the tax rate is set on individual properties, but depending on what your property value, your property, your... It's kind of hard to explain, but your tax bill might not go up 4%. It could go, it could go down, and depending on the mix of homes.
Yeah, I'm happy to give a stab at explaining that. So, for example, last year, our rate was 264. So, we go through a calculation that, with the assessments, that tell us what rate could we assess that would give us the same amount of revenue as last year? And that was the 26.1 that we referred to. So, that would give us the same amount of revenue. We're allowed to take a 4% increase to that revenue. So, if assessments go up, the rate goes down. It's possible, if you have a huge increase in assessments, that your 4% increase could even be a decrease in rate.
Right.
It has to do with assessments as a whole across the city.
So, if you have a $250,000 home?
Yes.
You're going to pay $1.50 more per month? You said $18 per year, so it's $1.50 per month?
Yes. Yes.
Let me make another comment. I don't know exactly what it is. City manager, you may, but I get... I get, there's a lot of confusion. I'm not saying any of the folks out here are confused at all about tax bills. But if you get a $1,000 tax bill from the city, how much it is actually city taxes? Because the city also bills for the school taxes. We don't control the school taxes, which go up every year. But I don't know if anyone goes down to the school board to make the same kind of comments that we just received. I don't think there are, but the city...
I can speak to that.
Our tax rate is like one-third of what for...
Well, if you live, if you live in District 8, which includes the city school district, your total rate with PJC School and the city is 1.167. That's your total rate. Percentage-wise, what you're paying the city is only 23% of your total bill. So, actually, almost 76% of your bill is going to Paducah City Schools.
So, I think that's worth repeating because, you know, and again, as Buzz said, we're not assuming that anybody here tonight does not understand that. However, when you get your tax bill, and same for me, only 23% of the taxes that you owe on your tax bill is attributable to the city. So, I think it's really important that, you know, that everybody understands that. And this has come up in previous years, so.
Yeah, and Commissioner, to your question, so for the schools, the Paducah Independent Schools' rate last year was 87.4. This year that they passed, and I don't know that there was any public comment that was made at their meetings, but they were open, and it was 88.2 is their new rate. So, 0.08 compared to ours, 0.07.
But we, you know, things like paving has gone up, you know, exponentially, things like that. So, we have costs increases, too, but that doesn't make it feel any better.
We have one more person that wants to make a comment. Parker Riley Jako?
Okay. Thank you. Thanks for having me today. Yes, sir. Thank you for being here. I've seen some of you guys, met some of you guys here before.
Could you give us your address?
I don't want to give my full address, but I live near Noble Park, so, yeah.
Are they on the form? I think they're supposed to be.
Yeah, it's on the form there.
Oh, okay.
Thank you.
So, today, I've come to also voice my opposition for the proposed increase on the real estate tax. I know on paper, this might sound pretty small, but in practice, it honestly, it creates the wrong incentives for Paducah. By taxing higher-value properties more heavily, we discourage people from investing in their homes, their businesses, and their developments as well. Every renovation, every upgrade, and every new project comes with a higher tax bill. Instead of encouraging revitalization, we're punishing it. We're actively punishing it. What this actually encourages is low-value use, like surface parking lots that are already dominating key parts of downtown. It makes more financial sense for a landowner to leave a lot sitting empty than to invest in apartments, retails, restaurants. This is quite, quite literally the opposite of what Paducah needs. Overall, I really don't understand why we don't, you know, put this tax towards those who underutilize their property instead. Those who have four different parking lots, who they refuse to develop anything of use on them. Those who, you know, have empty lots of grass that grow out to block the view of traffic. Those who are currently holding land to raise their own net worth, but yet refuse to reinvest, renovate, or revitalize any part of it. We all know there's a demand for more housing and stronger businesses, and that's one reason why the city itself is pushing the South Side Revitalization Plan, is what I'm assuming. But if the city increases the tax burden on those who are willing to invest while nearby communities are keeping their rates lower, new development will simply go into other towns and even across the river. Paducah will be left behind while others capture that growth. And so, for that reason, I urge the commission to reject this increase. Like you were saying, you may have already made up your minds, but, you know, raising taxes on improvements may help in the short term. It may help in the short term, but in the long term, it locks us into underdevelopment and missed opportunities. Let's choose growth and investment instead. Paducah needs investment in this community, and this proposal will actively work against that. Sorry. And so, yeah, this proposal will actively work against that. And if I've done my math correct, that's about what they were saying, about $7 increase per $100,000 assessment. And, you know, people have multiple houses or multiple businesses, and like you were saying, that adds up to a lot pretty quickly. I myself, I don't own any property, but I know people who own homes and own businesses, and we're actively working against them. So, yeah, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Shannon Crockett?
Good afternoon. Appreciate y'all letting me talk for a second. I am certainly not a public speaker, and y'all figure that out very quickly. But I live on Jefferson Street. I've lived in Paducah about six years now. And we left, six years ago, we left Illinois for a high-tax state, and we moved into Paducah. And I can tell you with 100% certainty, my tax bill for my household has went up substantially. It's not all city, you know, y'all pointed out the schools have... The taxes on the schools are high. One of the state taxes are different, personal property taxes, those are differently, taxed differently than they are in Illinois. But, you know, one thing I would encourage and ask of y'all as my neighbors, and some of y'all are my friends, is to really look at what the tax increases do to people, you know, in real life. I help, I work midnight shift at the Werman Center that your church sponsors, and that's a wonderful organization. And there's a lot of people in our area that are in need and don't have a lot. And just adding, you know, as somebody said, $18 a year, that's it. I also heard a second-hand quote from somebody that when the parcel tax was initiated and that new tax was developed, it was only $25 or $50 a year per person, and landlords can afford it because they got plenty of money. And those costs all get passed on to the other people. So, you know, one thing I would ask, you know, I know 4% is not a big increase. I wish my raise was 4% last year, but it wasn't at work. But what I would ask, you know, the 911 tax that was assessed last year, I guess, I think the beginning of that, my understanding was the money that went to kind of fund the 911 portion, or city's portion of 911 before that was, came out of the general fund. And now, we have all this influx of money. That's a new pot of money that's coming out. And where did that money go? You know, is that a new pot of money that we have a glut of money that now we don't have to pay it to 911 because we have a designated tax for that? Is there, you know, is there a way? You know, I don't know every little detail on that item of your budgets, but is there a place we can cut, you know, trim our waistline a little bit? Are there other things we can do better? And we're not asking y'all to turn the lights out and work in the dark and not use the air conditioning, but, you know, we're asking everybody to put a really, a real effort into trying to save money, just like it's your own, because it is. You know, y'all are our neighbors, and y'all pay the taxes and share that burden, too. But it really does add up, and it's not... Consequences aren't always great for folks that aren't on the upper end of the pay scale. So, I would urge y'all to really consider it and think hard about it. Appreciate your time.
Thanks, Shannon.
Thank you so much, Shannon. Okay, were there any other comments from people? Can we open it up for any comments?
That was all that signed up, I believe.
Right. Okay, so...
We would need, does, Audra, do you have anything else to close out the public hearing?
No.
But I had a, what's the next steps with that, Darren?
In relationship to?
Decision, or do we vote on it?
So, later on tonight, you'll, on your agenda, you'll have the first reading of the ordinance for the introduction of setting the tax levy. So, like any other ordinance introduction, that'll be read tonight. No action will be taken, and then you come back at your September 15th meeting to take the vote. It's the same process as we do for any ordinance introduction.
Should I wait to ask any questions then? Or will you have a presentation, I guess, with that?
No.
No.
This is what this is.
Yeah.
So, I guess, if I can ask now?
Sure, yeah.
So, with that, what would be the difference in the income the city has if we did add this tax versus if we didn't? Like, what would be the deficit or difference in that? A number amount, if you have it?
No, I did not bring the number amount. It is, it is assuming a 4% increase in revenue, which we included in the fiscal '26 budget that we passed. It was assuming that we would take the 4%. So, in order to meet the revenue that we budgeted for this line item, we would need to take the 4%.
But you can get that number to us.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, okay. So, she didn't come with it, but she can get it.
Yes.
So, we would have to adjust the budget if we made any difference.
Yes, we would have to adjust the budget if we did not take it.
So, then, am I hearing you, hearing us say that there is a possibility that we can come again and reconsider all of this? Because what I, one thing I don't want to do is to have residents come and express their concerns, and then we move forward as if we've not heard them. So, I'm wanting to know, is it opportunity to reconsider what the recommendation might be?
Yes.
Yes, and you would have to have another special call meeting. You'd have to do, whatever your decision is, you would have to do it within 24 hours of that next meeting or there shortly after, because you do have to, you're on a timeline of getting the bill sent to... So, you know, whatever your decision is, and that's why we always have these early in September, because we have to get that out, too. So, that means that you would have to have another special call meeting. Should you choose to go different than staff's recommendation, then you'd have to go back through two more readings. And so, you wouldn't have, you would be a substantial change, and I believe. And so, it would not only be one more special call meeting, but two more special call meetings. And any special call meeting would have to be within, no sooner than 24 hours of the previous call meeting.
But I guess then, at the same time, what I don't want to do is to even make the staff feel as if their time and their energy and their work has gone to naught, you know? But I would like for us to reconsider, have other options, perhaps.
I believe when we approved the budget, we knew that we would be... The assumption was we would be taking this 4%.
Yeah, we knew that. I mean, but I guess...
We talked about it at the meeting.
I didn't understand it, I guess, you know, being brand-new, I didn't... You know, I'm still learning the ropes, so I would have had more discussion then versus now. Would have had, you know, been more aware of what it meant, so.
I think we have talked, we have talked about it, but we've not had an opportunity prior to tonight for a public hearing. And we've not had an opportunity prior to tonight for residents to come and say, "I'm for it, I'm against it." So, since there have been, maybe three, and perhaps more, who didn't come that says, "I'm concerned about it," is going to bring perhaps some hardship and whatever the case might be, I think then it's worth us going back and saying, "Should we do this? Or should we increase it this much?"
Well, what we'll do is, we'll read the ordinance tonight, and then we will, you know, we'll talk about it in the interim and determine next steps.
But we can certainly discuss it at our next meeting, correct?
Yeah, we can, sure.
I mean, and that, that's typically how it works. An ordinance introduced, I guess in this case, we have a hearing. Think about it. You got two weeks to think about it, and then you can also discuss it at the next meeting. But what, I mean, is that not a good process?
That's fine with me.
And we can also discuss it with, you know, with our neighbors and other people in the interim, you know, I mean, as well, so.
And, you know, when we go through the budget process, and just for, you know, community's understanding as well, is that we don't know what PVA's value assessed is going to be. And so, that's typically why staff makes the recommendation at that point to do the 4%, and we have that discussion during the budget process. But we don't get, and the reason that we are in the 1st of September of having this is because, we'll back into it, again, just for, I don't want to overexplain it, but we get the valuation from the PVA. That doesn't come in until we get that first part of August, you know, about three weeks ago, three or four weeks ago. But then, we also have to publicize two, two times in the media, per state law, that we're going to have this public hearing. And so, we don't actually get that number to start backing into, to doing the assessment, the PVA assessment, to be able to understand what that means until... And so, it is, because of state law, it does put us in a crunch, you know, of that. And so, it's not, not that we were trying to hold off of having this public hearing in the, at this point.
Well, I get it. I guess the purpose of a public hearing is to hear from the public.
Exactly, right.
Which we had advertised twice already, as was required for a public hearing.
I do have one other comment to make. I've been speaking with my constituents about this with other cities that I've talked to on a regular basis. And we actually had a meeting about it a couple of weeks ago, discussing, you know, what our proposed rates were going to be. And we, I know of a city, Owensboro, I speak with them quite frequently. They were actually dinged in a recent, if you want to call it dinged, that's not a very formal word, but they were dinged in a recent bond rating hearing because they were not taking the 4%. And so, the structure that the state provides in this, in this revenue, it keeps you from going into recall, where your rate would be subject to recall. So, it's protecting the taxpayers from getting like an excruciatingly high rate. But it's also, in allowing the 4%, what it's doing is it's laying out a structured path for growth for the city. And so, what that does is rating agencies, when they look at, when they look at your city and they see that you take the 4%, they want you to use stable and reliable revenue sources. And so, they're seeing that like, like you're a prudent fiscal manager if you take the 4%, because that is allowing for the cost of, the cost of living increases and the cost, because our costs have gone up as well in the services that we provide. And so, that's kind of the path that the state lays for us, is to say, "You can take the 4% without it being subject to recall," to kind of allow for us to have allowance for those growth and expenses as well. So, I don't know if their rating was decreased or if it was a comment, but between, as I get those numbers to you on how it would affect revenue, I'm going to speak with her and find out what exactly their rating agency comment was and how it affected their bond... rating, because if it did decrease your bond rating, that could end up costing taxpayers more in the long run from having a higher interest rate on future bond issues.
Before we close the public hearing, I just want to make this comment. As elected officials, we're all elected, you know, we're accountable to the people, and we have to balance, you know, the effects on people with keeping, moving this city forward. And, you know, however we determine that to be, whether that be housing, the Southside project, you know, projects that people want to see in the, you know, making contributions to homelessness, you know, all the things that we do as a city. And so, you know, that's a constant rub, you know, that we always have to consider. And, and so, you know, we'll reflect on this, come back in two weeks, talk about it, and make some decisions on how to move forward. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, Lindsay, do we just say this ends the, you know, formally concludes the public hearing?
This formally concludes the public hearing. Thank you. Okay, we have a new employee introduction, and I'll ask Taylor Morsing to come up and introduce us.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to introduce Jennifer Adams, our newest Recreation Supervisor with Paducah Parks and Recreation. Jennifer is a married mother of three adult children. She's originally from Niagara Falls, Canada, and she came to Kentucky for university, at Union College, and to play volleyball there. She met her husband, John, in college and moved to Hawkinsville after graduation. She's a recently retired health and physical education teacher after twenty-eight years of service. The last four years were at Paducah Tillman High School, but she also taught at Reeden High School, McCracken County High School. She's now a kid for healthy living, engaged in her community. I know she's excited to positively, positively impact her community and to kind of get a change of pace from the classroom. You'll see her leading a couple important events this fall for Paducah Parks and Recreation, and that includes Touch a Truck, Pumpkin Walk, Veterans Day Celebration, Tree Lighting Ceremony, as well as help with Robert Cherry Civic Center operations. So, we're excited to have Jennifer here as a member of our team.
Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you.
So, you were born and raised in Canada?
Yes, sir.
Okay. All right, well, I'm married to a Canadian, so, eh? Eh?
Absolutely.
So, welcome, it's great to have you.
Thank you, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, so, before we move to the consent agenda, I'd just make a couple of remarks. This week, we kick off, you know, a new schedule for recycling, and I just wanted to mention this because we're changing up exactly when recycling is actually picked up. It's going to be picked up every other week. We put a lot of publicity out about this, but actually, I'm my own worst enemy, so I got up this morning and I thought, you know, my recycling's going to get picked up this morning. Well, nay, no, it's not, Mayor, it's not going to be picked up. So, I had to stop and think, you know, and I'm sure a lot of people are trying to, you know, consider that, but your recycling is going to be picked up. You should have gotten, everybody should have gotten a letter and a schedule in the mail, and it's going to be picked up every two weeks on the same day, not at the same time, but on the same day as your regular refuse. And so, it'll take a while to get used to it, but I just wanted to remind people, you know, to be observant of when their time for recycling is actually takes place. So, that's enough of my comments. We'll move on to the consent agenda. Items on the consent agenda are considered to be routine by the Board of Commissioners and will be enacted by one motion and one vote. There will be no separate discussion of these items unless a board member saw a request, in which event the item will be removed from the consent agenda and considered separately. City Clerk will read the items recommended for approval unless any Commissioner would like an item removed for separate discussion. If not, City Clerk?
Approved minutes for the August twenty-sixth, twenty-twenty-five Board of Commissioners meeting, received and filed documents, appointment of Alexis Mars and Carrie Sager to the Paducah Main Street Board, said term shall expire September second, twenty-twenty-six, and September second, twenty-twenty-seven, respectively. Personnel actions, a municipal order approving a memorandum agreement with Darren and Kelly Hack for certain incentives and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order approving a memorandum of agreement with Dustin Hawkins for certain incentives and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order accepting the bid of Reliable Electric LLC in an amount not to exceed fifty-eight thousand, nine hundred eighty dollars for new lighting in Dolly Magnette Plaza and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order amending Municipal Order Number Thirty-Twenty-Two, a schedule of fees for Oak Grove Cemetery and Mausoleum pursuant to Chapter Twenty-Six Cemeteries of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. A municipal order authorizing the application for a USTA Southern Parks and Recreation Grant through the United States Tennis Association in the amount of two thousand dollars to provide an adaptive tennis program for the youth and adults in Paducah and surrounding areas in the spring and fall of twenty-twenty-six, accepting all awarded grant funds and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order authorizing the purchase of structural firefighting gear for the Fire Department in the amount of forty-six thousand, six hundred eighty-eight dollars and twenty cents and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute an application for a twenty-twenty-six Kentucky Fire Commission grant in the amount of five thousand, seven hundred dollars for purchase of a thermal imaging camera, accepting any grant funds awarded by the Kentucky Fire Commission, and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order authorizing and directing the mayor to execute a contract with Paducah Alliance of Neighbors in an amount not to exceed one hundred thousand dollars for specific services and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same. A municipal order accepting the bid of Linwin Motors for sale to the City of Paducah of two compact SUVs for use by the Paducah Parks Department in the amount of thirty-three thousand, eight hundred ninety dollars each, a total of sixty-seven thousand, seven hundred eighty dollars, and authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for same. A municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a twenty-twenty-six Kentucky litter abatement grant application through the Kentucky Division of Waste Management for the Paducah Works, Public Works Department's Street Litter Abatement Program, accepting all awarded grant funds, and authorizing the mayor to execute all award documents. A municipal order approving and authorizing the execution of the modification to the tolling agreement through the City of Paducah and Jim Smith Contracting Company LLC and JSC Terminal, DBA Midwest Terminal.
So moved.
Second. Call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
We have two municipal orders tonight. The first one is for our contract for services with our Economic Development Organization, and I'll ask the City Clerk to please read it.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled a municipal order authorizing the mayor to execute a contract for services with the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council in an amount of two hundred fifty thousand dollars for specific services.
So moved.
Second.
So, I just, I wanted to just talk us a couple of minutes about this. I serve on the Greater Paducah Economic Development Council Board, attend meetings monthly and committee meetings, and sometimes outside of those regular meetings, and I am intimately familiar with the work that we do, trying to attract companies. We've had some recent success with the general matter announcement and some of the other announcements out at the Department of Energy site. We've got a lot of other balls in the air of companies that we're talking with, and this is just an example of monies that the, that the city is expending, you know, to recruit people to come in here and create jobs for the community. And jobs is something that's, more jobs for this community, more living wage jobs is one of our commission's primary goals, and this is a very important investment that we're making to help promote that and continue that. So, I just wanted to call that out and invite any of the Commissioners that have any comments to make comments, or the City Manager.
You could say that about the other things that you have on here, too.
What's that?
Actually, well, the spray park at Robert Coleman Park.
I'm getting ready to say that.
All of those, all of those projects. I mean, it would be easy to compare it for that, so.
Yeah. I just, it's part of the long-range goal for Paducah is that we've got a, we need a lot of housing, but we also need people with good jobs that can pay for the housing. So, it all kind of ties together, and we want the community to be successful. This money is an investment in doing that. And some years are lean years, you know, we don't have a lot of success, but it seems like we're hitting it on all cylinders this year, and so I commend you and your service on that board that, I mean, there's a lot of success going on right now that will really make a difference in Paducah two, three years down the road, once these businesses start building and start hiring more people and all that, so.
But it's, it's...
Thank you for your work.
Thank you, it's team success. We have a whole team of people, you know, that are working on it, you know, the county, the city, and leaders in the community, but everybody's very dedicated to the success, so.
Yeah, we certainly do commend you for the work, but I can't emphasize enough livable wage.
Yeah.
Yeah, and I think, I think that's important, because people don't want to get up and work forty hours a week and still can't afford to live, or do extra things.
I can assure you, Commissioner Henderson, that is a primary goal, you know, of the recruiting work that we do, you know, and we delineate between projects based upon the salary. I mean, that's one of the, one of the most important things that we talk to people about is what is, what is your payroll? What is the average salary? So, it's, it's very important.
I believe that used to be one of the primary factors in the recruitment, as well as benefits. What benefits do you provide? That would provide medical insurance, or that would provide them security for the future.
Amen.
Okay, if there are no other comments, I'll ask the City Clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
And I'll ask the City Clerk to read the second municipal order.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners to adopt a municipal order entitled a municipal order accepting the bid of R.L. Turner in the amount of fifty-four thousand dollars for design services for the reconstruction of the spray ground located at Robert Coleman Park and authorizing the mayor to execute all documents related to same.
So moved.
Second.
I'm going to ask Amy to come in, and I know a little bit about this, but she knows a lot more, she and the City Manager, so I think it's important.
Good evening, Mayor, Commissioners, City Manager, and City Clerk. So, this is a contract for design services for a new spray ground. If you remember, when we put out this RFP, we actually had the restroom facility looped into this project, but the bids came back high, and so we pulled that out, and we decided to do this as a separate project and address the bathroom separately. So, this is just for the spray pad for design services.
And do we have, like, RFPs, do we put those out for design contracts as well, or is that just for, like, construction contracts?
Both, we do both, yeah.
And sometimes we actually do what's called a design build, to where we wrap it all up into one, and so you don't have two separate ones. We're just looking on a project-by-project basis, but sometimes we find cost savings by doing a design build project.
Gotcha, is this what this one is?
That was originally how we started that.
Yes, that was how this one was originally put out.
So, the reason I want to, you know, call this out, again, as Commissioner Wilson said, this, we could talk about a lot of projects, you know, that we're doing here, but, but this one in particular, we put that spray park in some...
Twenty years.
Twenty years ago, and we wrapped it into the, you know, the piping that was there for the swimming pool that was there originally, and it's coming to end of life, and it's going to have to be replaced. And we've seen some estimates, and I'm not going to mention right now, for, for a new spray park that, you know, that knocked my head off. I mean, in terms of what, what we may have to spend, now, we'll put that out for RFP to try to get the best price, but again, you know, we talk about all the things that we have to do as a city, you know, we've got, you know, a rather large expense coming down the road at some point for this project.
Potentially. It just depends on what we want at the end of the design process.
Exactly.
Yep, so.
I'll make a comment on that, but these spray parks are so much more economical than a pool, because you don't have to worry about getting lifeguards, you know, it's just, it's a lot less money, and that's kind of a lot more safety for the people using them, so it may end up being more money, I mean, it seems like a lot of money, but it's not a lot compared to a pool, so.
Any other comments? Thank you, Amy. I'll ask, I'll ask the City Clerk to call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
We have one ordinance to adopt tonight, and that's the business license fee schedule that we talked about two weeks ago, and are there any, any questions about that from anybody? Okay, I'll ask the City Clerk to call roll.
A proposed motion of the Board of Commissioners...
Sorry.
...to adopt an ordinance entitled an ordinance amending Chapter One-O-Six Taxation of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Paducah, Kentucky. This ordinance is summarized as follows. This ordinance amends Section One-O-Six dash one-O-One of the City of Paducah Code of Ordinances by replacing the longstanding three-point-five-million-dollar gross receipts threshold with a phased-in schedule that increase, that increases the threshold to eleven-point-six-five million dollars over five years, beginning January one, twenty-twenty-six. Starting in year six, the threshold will be adjusted annually based on changes in Consumer Price Index, rounded to the nearest ten thousand dollars, with authority for the city commission to forego adjustments in any year of its choosing. In addition, this ordinance increases the minimum annual license tax from thirty-five dollars to fifty dollars.
So moved.
Second.
Call roll, please.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
Okay, we have one ordinance to introduce, and that's the tax levy that we've had previous discussion about, and I'll ask the City Clerk to please read it.
A proposed motion that the Board of Commissioners introduce an ordinance entitled an ordinance setting the tax levies and rates of taxation on all property in the City of Paducah, Kentucky, subject to taxation for municipal purposes and for school purposes for the period from July one, twenty-twenty-five through June thirtieth, twenty-twenty-six, with purposes of said taxes herein underdefined. Purpose and rate per one hundred dollars. General fund of the city, real property, point-two-seven-one per one hundred dollars. Personal property, except inventory, point-three-five-six up rate per one hundred dollars. Motor vehicles and watercraft, point-three-nine per one hundred dollars. School purposes, Paducah Junior College, real estate, point-zero-one-four per one hundred dollars. Personal property, except inventory, point-zero-one-four per one hundred dollars. Motor vehicles and watercraft, point-zero-three-one per one hundred dollars. The City of Paducah shall collect the following taxes for the Board of Education. Paducah Independent School District, real property, point-eight-eight-two per one hundred dollars. Personal property, including inventory, point-eight-eight-two per one hundred dollars. Property taxes levied herein shall be due and payable in the following manner. In the case of tax bills which reflect an amount due less than two thousand dollars, the payment shall be due on November first, twenty-twenty-five, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. In the case of all other tax bills, payment shall be in accordance with the following provisions. The first half payment shall be due on November first, twenty-twenty-five, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until November thirtieth, twenty-twenty-five. The second half payment shall be due on February first, twenty-twenty-six, and shall be payable without penalty and interest until February twenty-eighth, twenty-twenty-six.
So moved.
Second.
So, we'll, we'll be ready to discuss this again in two weeks. And so, that's it for, for municipal orders and ordinances, and so now we have a discussion item, and I'm going to turn it over to our City Clerk. Maybe before I do that, let me just say this. The city introduced an app a couple of years ago that wasn't the most user-friendly app in the world, and we got feedback that it was not very user-friendly. And so, we made a decision to do better, and I'm very pleased with the decision that we made, and the company that we've gone with, and a lot of, a lot of cities are using it, and it is very user-friendly, but I'm going to let Lindsay do the introduction with Eric's support.
You're going to say what your screensaver is there?
This is my daughter Nora, so everybody gets to see her pictures when I pull up my iPhone.
So, that's why you want to do this presentation?
That's right, that's why I said, Eric, you don't get to do it, I have to show off. So, thank you, Mayor, for that introduction tonight. I just want to kind of give you all a demo of the app itself. It is out on the App Store right now, so it is downloadable for anyone who wants to use it. Earlier this year, Kathy Bryant Quimby and Eric and I, we went out and looked for what other products were on the market. We've been using a container app with a bunch of other different cities, and it was not as super user-friendly, so we wanted to do something that was very user-friendly, and we think that we found that in C-click Fix, and you've probably heard of that, a lot of different cities use that technology. A lot of different cities use that technology, and so we went through the implementation process, and tonight we're going to show you what it kind of looks like. So in order to download, you're going to want to go to your App Store. If you have an iPhone, it'll look kind of like what, what you're going to see me do here tonight. Android users will look very, very similar as well. So I'm going to go to my App Store, and I'm going to search for My Paducah, all one word. And I've already downloaded it, but if you haven't, it'll look something like this. And you'll have an opportunity to download from there.
I downloaded it early today, but I can't find it now.
It may be at the very end. If you have as many apps as I do, I have to scroll all the way over to the very end. Okay, there you go. Good, good. So this is what the front page kind of looks like when you, when you get into it for the first time. You have an opportunity to make a new request. You can go to our website. That'll take you external to like your Safari or something like that to pull up our website. You can go to our Facebook page. If you have the Facebook app downloaded, it'll take you right there in the app. And then you can call us, and this number goes directly to our customer experience line. So you can talk to Kathy and Donna, if you call that. I'm going to kind of walk through if I am someone brand new using the app, and I am not the most technologically savvy person, so if I can do it, anyone can do it. So if I go in and I want to submit a new request, I hit there at the bottom, New Request, and then I have an opportunity to either put in a photo, no photo, I can go to my camera and, and take a photo, or I can go to my photo library. And I'm going to go to my photo library, and I'm going to get one of Chris Yarber today over at the farmer's market parking lot when we were looking at some, some pavement that needs to be updated. So I'm going to put this in my app as a real one. So when you go to Next, it'll take you to Location. You can type in a location if you want. If you have your location services turned on in your settings, it will geolocate to where you're actually at. So it's geolocating me to City Hall right now. I can look at this on satellite as well. That helps me kind of get an idea of what I'm looking at a little bit easier. So I want to drop this right over here near the farmer's market where we were talking about this today. So when I hit Next, it gives me the opportunity to put in what type of inquiry this is. So we have a whole bunch of different options here. Under General Inquiries, if you just want to get on and subscribe to notices, you don't really have anything to put in yet, you can select Subscribe to Notices, and it will take you through the process of registering. We have other types of requests in here. Large brush pickup, since we just recently changed to anything over that dimension being the only thing you have to report to, to get it picked up, we've got that in here. Missed trash pickup, bulk item pickup, road maintenance and obstructions, alley maintenance, we can, you can put in a code violation, and then park maintenance request. So for this one, I'm going to do a road maintenance and obstruction, and I'm going to just type in a description for this. Farmer's Market Lot Needs Catch At Entry. Each one of these will take you through, giving a little bit more information. This is going to be a cracked or uneven pavement. Is it causing an active hazard? And yes, this is a city-maintained area. If you don't know, you could put, I don't know. And then I'm going to submit that. So it's going to prompt me to register or sign in, so I'm going to do that for you live. I'm going to register as a new user, as if I've never been in it before, so I can show you all kind of what that looks like. It's going to take you to put in your email and first and last name.
You just do this one time, and then it'll remember that.
You do this one time, and it'll remember you from then on.
Because the other one wouldn't.
Correct. That was one of our main questions when we were researching. It wants me to do a stronger password. Wants you to be secure. Don't know. Okay.
It said an unexpected error. It was an error that was not expected.
It was not expected.
That's.
I will say, I just created an account here, and everything worked out fine, so.
Lindsay, are you trying to use your same email that you already had in there?
Yes.
It may be tracking that you've already got that email in there, so you couldn't.
I just did it, too.
Yeah. So I think you can just go back and log in under your original, and then we can move.
No pressure.
No pressure, right?
Because if you're, I think that's what it was trying to do, if you just back out of it.
Once you get one in here, so I'm going to jump in. Once you submit, it'll take you in, and you will see, you can see on our map under Requests, the ones that have been put in, and the ones in orange are the ones that are still open. So you can take a look at this one right here, and you can see what is kind of going on in the city. You can also take a look at ones that have been closed recently, like this one downtown.
So are you saying you can see your own or other people's?
You can see your own and other people's if it is a public request. So you can follow ones that your neighbors have put in. So if something is going on in your neighborhood, and you want to look and see if someone's already reported it, you can see if they've already reported it and what the resolution is to it. The only ones that are set to private right now are Subscribe to Notices and any code violation ones. Those would be automatically private.
Got you.
You can also see these as a list, if you want to look through them that way. And so in the next few weeks, we will be sending out notices, hopefully by mail, with a QR code that will allow people to just scan that QR code and get in here. We're also hoping to run some promotions to get people to download the app and be able to start using it. So I think that it is going to be a better experience. Once you get signed in, you'll stay signed in, and it's much easier on the backend as well for city staff to use, so.
So how, how many downloads do we have with the previous app? Do you, is that a number that we have?
I do have it, but I would have to go and look. I want to say it was around 1,500, I think. Did you have that exact number?
It was like between.
Fifteen and eighteen.
Between nine and, yeah.
Because, because it was a container app, we share, we share it with a lot of other cities that are also Tyler subscribers, so Tyler has to run the number and then filter out what's only for the City of Paducah. Last time we got that was, I think, four or five months ago, and it was somewhere in the 1,000 to 1,500 range. We can get the exact number, but.
Well, I mean, I think our goal is to beat that.
Yeah, absolutely.
You know, and, and one of the things I want to say to citizens, you know, who use the app, I mean, one of the things that we've emphasized is that, you know, when somebody puts something into that app, it's going to get followed through on. Follow through, follow through, follow through. You know, so under Lindsay's leadership, you know, we are, we are going to make sure, you know, that people have confidence that when they put something into that app and it ends up here, you know, we're going to do something with, with that, and we're going to communicate back to people and let them know what's going on. So that's, that's really the key to the success from my standpoint, and obviously user friendliness. And, and I would just ask all the Commissioners to download the app and use it themselves and, you know, and, and talk to your constituents about it so that we can get, you know, more widespread use, so.
One other really neat thing about this app is if you sign in, if you do register and sign in and, and start interacting with the system, it will send you notices as far as like push notifications. So when we send out something for remember the hours for Labor Day and the changes in recycling routes and these kind of things for different things that are coming up in the city, you'll get basically a notification pop-up, just like you're getting a text message. And so that's another way that we can keep in contact with our citizens as well.
That's awesome.
That's good.
Absolutely.
We also have an online portal, like we have always had, so that is available on our website at padukaky.gov/MyPaduka. If you go to that page, it's embedded in that page. You can submit requests online as well. So if you prefer to go online and do that, that's another option.
Any questions or thoughts from Commissioners?
I like it.
That's great.
Mayor, I would say that, you know, staff heard the frustration that with the previous, and kudos to Lindsay and Eric and, and all the team that, that took, took that challenge to heart and has been working really hard to get us to this point, so thank you very much.
Thank you. That's a lot of work.
Thank you, Eric. Thanks, Lindsay. Okay, we're just about to wrap up here. Comments from City Manager?
None this evening, Mayor.
Comments from Commissioners?
None this evening, Mayor.
None this evening, Mayor.
All right. We do not have an executive session, and so I would entertain a motion for adjournment.
Thank you.
So moved.
Call roll.
Commissioner Henderson?
Aye.
Commissioner Smith?
Aye.
Commissioner Thomas?
Aye.
Commissioner Wilson?
Aye.
Mayor Bray?
Aye.
You know, Lindsay.
Do I?